Recording in progress.
Thank you, everyone, for joining. We had some technical issues in the beginning. That's why we're off to a late start. So thanks for your patience. It's now 7:40, and I will call the Finance Committee Budget Hearing to order. Since this is also a joint Finance Committee meeting, we'll start with, I guess we don't have to do a roll call because we are here in, we're present. So I'm seeing one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13 members of the Finance Committee present. We have quorum. And let's get started. So I will share my screen, and I will ask everyone to save questions until the end. And if you have a question, please raise your hand. So thank you for joining us on the Finance Committee FY23 Budget Hearing. This work is made possible by a lot of people. So first, I'd like to thank my fellow Finance Committee members for their diligent work. I'd also like to thank the Town Manager, the Controller, the Assistant Town Manager, all their staff was just excellent and very helpful in putting this together. So my goal tonight is to take you through some high-level broad strokes of the FY23 budget. You will shortly receive an in-depth budget book from FinCom. It will have many details. If you are interested in more details tonight, please ask questions. I have the budget book on my laptop and the spreadsheets, so I'm sure jointly among the 13 of us, we can answer any question. So I'll start with the budget summary, just high-level overview, then discuss differences from the Town Manager's budget, touch upon revenues, key expense drivers, new positions, and then a year-over-year comparison with FY22. And I think for the interest of time, I'll start with the year-over-year comparison. The operating reserve expenses, I'll dive into that. That is informed by our three-year model, which we are doing a little differently this year, and I'm happy to share the work of some of our Finance Committee members. Then a quick discussion of uncertainties and a brief, brief comments on warrant articles. Finance Committee has not yet voted all of the warrant articles, but we have discussed them, and and I know several Town Meeting members have approached us with questions, so I'm happy to share some preliminary thoughts with you before we vote. Okay, also, I wanted to note that none of Winchester's $6-point-million-dollar American Rescue Plan Act funds were included in the FY23 budget, and also no elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds or SRF funds were included in the FY23 budget. These are one-time funds, and as much as we would like to balance the budget with non-Town funds, that wasn't in the cards this time. So we're using all of our revenues and our, some of our free cash, which I'll show. Yes, so here's just a bottom-line upfront summary. So I'm comparing the FY23 budget for education, municipal expenses, undistributed, and non-appropriated for this year, highlighting the variation to FY22 and the variation as a percentage. So education has a budget of $61,312,000. This is the schools' and the vocational budget. It's 2.8 million larger than FY22 for an increase of 4.73%. The municipal budget is the second-largest, $30.894 million, a little over a million larger from FY22, increasing by 3.54%. Undistributed, $24.43 million, an increase of $1.059 million or 4.52%, and then non-appropriated at $1.165 million, an increase of $107,000 or 10%. So this highlights the sum of our budget excluding capital, the Enterprise Fund, the revolving fund. So the total budget is a little over $142 million, but this is a good gauge of how the different funds are increasing year-over-year. So our total budget is growing at 4.3% compared to last year FY22, while our tax revenue is growing at under 3% or 2.82%. We're using $115 million of our tax revenue, which is a little over $3 million more than last year, and then balancing the remainder with over $690,000 of free cash. So this is just the bottom-line-up some, bottom-line-upfront summary. I wanted to highlight the few changes to the Town Manager's budget that the Finance Committee found. Overall, it was a very lean budget. There wasn't much to cut. We didn't really cut much. It was just changes that were noted after the fact. So for the Town Manager's budget, we added $9,000 for contractual car allowance, removed $25,000 for a study that had been funded with a reserve fund transfer last fiscal year, and it was uncertain whether or not that study would take place. So that's a decrease of $16,000. Then for the Controller's budget, at the time that the Town Manager's budget was published, there was an unknown retirement, so that saves $14,000, and there's some mid-year step increases that save $4,000. The Assessor had a higher-than-expected professional services quote for an extra add of $9,000 to the budget. The Conservation Commission is expanding quite a lot what they're doing this year, which is great. They're adding, I don't want to confuse this table, but they're adding staff, and this table is mentioning $10,000 of landscaping that they are proposing. And we talked to all parties, the DPW and the Conservation Commission, and they agreed to move it to the DPW budget just for oversight, because the Conservation Commission, to this day, hasn't really had much of an expense budget and hasn't done this sort of thing. So I think together, they all decided it would be more effective. General Services budget, small saving of $400 for digitization. The Historical Commission unfortunately did not get matching funds for grant application, and thus we trimmed the budget by $15,000 and then added $500 back for, I believe it was the trend for their recording secretary, so that was raised. Department of Public Works, there was a scribner's error in the Town Manager's budget, and the custodian budget was $50,000 too high, so we reduced that, and then we added $10,000 for a higher quote and added $10,000 for the Conservation Commission landscaping I mentioned. So it was really $53,000, and then we reduced it by $20,000. So the net is $33,000 reduction. Environmental remediation, there was a minor reduction in the contingency fees, $500, because a lot of their funds already have contingencies built in. And then for the vocational education budget, there were two factors that changed the budget. One was a reduction of $64,000 for the debt service for the Northeastern Metro Tech School. As you recall, this recently passed voter mandate in the 12 communities, and it was just an estimate of how much that debt service would be. So this was offset by an increase of $98,000 for additional students and their tuition at Minuteman and Medford Vocational High Schools. So the net was an add of $33,836. For funded debt interest, we received more accurate numbers. There was a new interest added for the Lynch feasibility feasibility study and for the transfer station engineering. Also, actuals for the cost of Washington Street were tallied, and so that was a net add. It's $76,865, but the actuals for Washington Street were offset by an increase in state aid of $25,984. Finally, water and sewer. The assessments changed since the budget was released in February, and there was an impact. So this is a reduction of $25,000 for local debt and the MWRA capital changes. So the net, you know, it all balances out to about $850 added to the general fund budget, when it's all said and done. Now switching to revenue. So the Finance Committee proposes FY23 revenue of $142,596,182. This was a slight decrease over FY22 due to the one-time COVID funds not recurring. There was also a slight reduction of the Town Manager's revenue due to three items that I alluded to earlier, the decreased revenue from the water and sewer, increased interest on funded debt, and then a slight increase of free cash for the revenue portion. So the new growth revenue is, we agreed to keep it at $850,000. It's conservative, but, and 24% lower than FY22, but we trust the Controller's judgment, and due to COVID, we realize that's impacted a bit. State aid is larger at $11.7 million than FY22, and the local receipts are positive, so it's aiming at $9.8 million, which is 17% higher than FY22, showing more of a recovery from COVID. So just to highlight some of the major increases in the 23 budget compared to the FY22 budget. No surprise, contractual increases for staff was the bulk of the increase, at 51%. And the lion's share was education, about $1.9 million. Also, new staff was added. That's only 5% of the budget, but $300,000 in cost in addition to OPEC and healthcare costs. Education other costs besides contractual was around $844,000, and that was mostly driven by special education, which has had an uptick in out-of-district placements and also just an increase in special needs students. The pension increased by 8% for a total of $446,000. Health insurance, $479,000, increase of, and it's 9% larger, and Public Works is $386,000 or 7% of the major increases. And lastly, general government increased by $286,000 or 5%. So the new positions that I mentioned, just under seven. So the Conservation Commission is increasing its agent to one full-time equivalent staff. So she's now at .71. The Police is adding another half FTE, or full-time equivalent, for the dispatch position. They have a half position right now, and having two parties for this stressful, demanding job will improve their ability. The Recreation is making its clerk full-time, so raising it by .2. That's no net add to our budget because that's funded through the Enterprise Fund. So the schools are adding the remaining positions. So for the world language at the high school, that's a net add of .4. There are two language-based adds, one at VO for one FTE and .6 at McCall. And then finally, four kindergarten aides are added, so for a total of $6.99 and an increasing cost of a little over $300,000. And as I previously mentioned, the new positions, in addition to this $300,000 impact, health insurance and OPEC or pension costs. Okay, our three-year plan. So the three-year plan is important just to get a sense of where the town's finances are heading. So right now, it might seem we're very flush. Our reserves are at 12%, over 12%, 0.44%, and the Select Board's recommendation is to keep them at 6% to 10%. But this can be misleading because our expenses are, and our operating budget is continuing to grow and outpacing our revenues. So it's important to get a handle on this. And in the Town Manager's budget book, she modeled three different scenarios, or as she refers to it as a sensitivity analysis that looks at, you know, middle-of-the-road, more conservative and more aggressive, changing the assumptions as outlined. For example, how much education is growing or what our revenues will be. So we did things a little differently this year, trying not to specify exactly what these various knobs will be, but to look at 10 years of historical data and where, unless there's exceptions due to legal requirements or previously established policy, we set these values by looking at the average over the 10 years and the standard error, and also excluded the two extreme values. And why we did this is to create a confidence interval of the analysis, and basically to give you error bars. So I'll show you a slide on, on the next slide is a graph showing with 95% confidence, a band of values for the next three years. And these are the other assumptions. I won't read through them, but just standard about contributory retirement steps and columns. All motions relying on free cash to pass at this Springtown meeting, and maybe two conservative assumptions. One are that future free cash spending at all in Springtown meetings combined will be limited to $1.1 million annually. In the past few years, the Controller and I looked at it this morning, the average has been closer to $4 million. So yeah, it could be more aggressive. And the turnbacks, we're assuming, will occur at 1% of the total revenue, which is historically conservative. Okay. So here is that projection. Now we are at 12.46% operating reserves, and next year, FY23, the confidence band, the 95% confidence band is between 8.3% and 11.41%, where the blue line is the projection, the median, the mean, the mean, not the blue, at 9.86%. And shown in green here is the recommended band between 6% to 10%. And then FY24, this mean drops to 6.23%, which has a good probability of dropping below 6%. And then in FY25, it's certain that an operational override is needed. So Sam, I see your hand is raised unless, so if you have an urgent need, please go ahead. Otherwise, if it's a question or a point of order or correction, I'd like you to save it to the end.
I'll save it. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so the summary here is that our confidence interval modeling gives us 95% confidence that the value will be in this blue-shaded curve. And based on what we know and 10 years of historical data, this is where we think we're going. And why is it important to talk about when overrides are needed? So the former Chair, Enzo Rasionado, put this slide together last year, and I really like it because it just shows us what happens if overrides are timed too close together. And what we really don't want to have happen is to have the Lynch override, which is certain for March of 2023, to compete with an operating override, because that lowers the chances of them both succeeding. If they could be spaced, if we could keep the operating override, if we could postpone it until FY25, so occurring in the 2024 timeframe, we think that has a better probability, you know, the late 2024 timeframe, that has a higher probability of succeeding and passing than if it were brought in. So that's why we're stressing and really keeping an eye on our operating reserves, because if it happens too soon, if we spend too much of free cash, our Moody's rating, our AAA bond rating is put into jeopardy, and also the success of an override, if it's too close to Lynch, is put into jeopardy. Uncertainties. So all the models I've shown you do not include extreme outcomes of the six contractual negotiations that are ongoing with the unions right now. I've heard one has been settled, but I haven't heard the outcome of that and the impact to the budget. Also, the impact of inflation. So we know it's coming. We've seen the food prices. We felt the pain. How will that impact our overall budget is not clear. Increases in healthcare costs. We heard Rich Mucci's presentation. We saw the trend. It's rising. We know it's real. And then the impact of new COVID variants. It's uncertain. Hopefully, it won't be as bad or as costly as previously, but we don't know. Uncertainty in school enrollment. So this is 10 years of data showing the the academic year enrollment over time for pre-K in blue, K-5 in pink, which you can see is decreasing, 6 to 8, which is steady, and 9 to 12, which is steady the past few years. So we see this decrease, and it's not clear what next year will be. I think Peter Rowe did an excellent modeling job to try to predict what those classes will be, but it's anyone's guess, really, because uncertainty, there was so much uncertainty last year in how many sections they would need, and I think that same uncertainty is there this year. Now I summarize the headcount of the teachers at the various schools, also over a 10-year period. And we see growth from a total education headcount of 464 in 2012 to 636 in 2023. And Finance Committee was surprised at the maintenance of the K-5 school headcounts in this time. And I've heard that there are different types of staff that are making up these numbers. There are different students over the past 10 years, so, but I think it's unclear what the required school headcount or FTE should be, and this is open to discussion. So small classes are good on the one hand, but bad, worse for budget. So I think this really has to be a focal point of the discussion next year. The schools wanted to maintain their FTE one more year and wait and see for next year. Okay. Now warrant articles. So as I mentioned earlier, we haven't, Finance Committee has not voted all the warrant articles. We did vote in favor of all the capital articles put forth by the Capital Planning Committee, but I know there's lots of Town Meeting member discussion about Articles 18 for the Sports Court and 26 and 27 for Perry Tauss and Hurhurst. So I think overall, we are recommending a financially conservative approach based on the projections that I've shown and the uncertainty about when we'll need an operational override. That's not to say these are bad projects. I would, I think we would all like to fund all of them, but it's just a matter of prioritizing and really evaluating all the projects with one set of criteria to see which is needed now and which could be postponed to a later time. So I think I will leave it at that and open up to questions first in the room. Questions or comments? Giving priority to our in-person guests. Okay. Thank you. So I expect we'll have at least one question from the crowd. Roger.
All right. So a couple of questions. First, a general question. With this scenario that you've laid out, why are we adding headcount anywhere? It's obvious we have an expense problem here. And so why are we adding headcount anywhere? That's a general question. Do you want me to ask other questions right now, or?
If you don't mind, let me just pop back to that. So here are the new positions, and so it's a fair question. Why are we adding positions? For the schools, it was their maintenance of effort budget to add these. Some, I think these lower three are special education-based, and they advocated, I don't know if it's mandated, but you know, they told us, look, this is really important. And also for the world language, they said, look, this passed in the override. It doesn't make sense for students to start Mandarin in middle school and then not be able to continue. The clerk is no net cost, and the dispatch and the agent. So they all made an excellent case, and we we couldn't prioritize one over the other. So I think from FinCom's perspective, we voted a lean budget, and we were really hoping to clawback funds from elsewhere rather than these positions. So FinCom So FinCom, anything to add to that? Next question, Roger.
Um, uh, with regard to, um, the, uh, new growth, um, forecast versus the local receipts forecast, um, i- the local receipts being, uh, forecast to go up substantially, and the new growth going down, uh, isn't, isn't a lot of the local receipt have to do with, uh, new, uh, new construction?
So let me bring up my cheat sheet for the revenue years, and this has more detail, so you can't see at home, but you can see here, one benefit of being here, so I have to just move my window. Bear with me. So for the new growth, the revenues are highly variable, and they do depend on new construction activity. The Controller does like to keep this conservative, and we, we support her, um, perspective on this, and so we didn't propose a change. Now, for local receipts, um, the growth of seventeen percent is due to an expected return to pre-COVID patterns of local receipts as well, I didn't mention this, as changes to the fees at the transfer station, which have already been passed, and I believe are scheduled to increase, um, in FY twenty-two as well. Um, and year-to-date receipts support these assumptions, and so that's why FinCom did not edit either the local receipts or the growth assumptions.
Okay, so just to follow up, uh, um, so the, the, um, the assumption, uh, with respect to, uh, uh, building permits is consistent with the new growth assumption? And that, that, that's basically what I'm?
Sure, so I remember, I know Ruthie, you did the building and zoning, and Al had great, or Janine had great things to say about the pace so far, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I don't know if you can hear me, Roger, and we're not online, um, this is my full soda.
Come, come.
Watch out for cables. Yeah, 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 yeah.
There you go. So the eight hundred fifty K in new growth is actually an increase over what we usually put in that line item. Um, it has to be conservative for some, some legal reasons with, you know, how you report to the state. They don't want municipalities just pumping that up so that they can spend more, and then it doesn't, it doesn't materialize. So it's traditionally been, since I've been on FinCom, eight hundred thousand. Um, it's been increased this year by Town Manager. If Town Manager hadn't done that herself, um, as the person who was responsible for this write-up, I would have suggested it. So I was glad to see it, um, we talked it over with Comptroller. She felt it was okay, but certainly did not want to push it anymore, um, with fear of, you know, not being completely aligned with, um, the expectations around reporting and laws and, and how much you can expect to come from there. Uh, so the numbers from past years are higher because we had good years, but when we wrote our budgets for those years where you see one point one million, one point oh-two million, we forecasted eight hundred K, so I hope that that, that clears it up. So we're trying to be a little less conservative.
What you're saying is it's never consistent? It's never, it's, 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 it's low-ball for reasons other than, um?
Yeah, that's, I mean, you could call it low-ball, if you look back, I mean, FY twenty was eight, eight hundred twenty K, so.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So we're, our forecast is higher than that.
Okay, appreciate it, I under- understand now, I, I didn't know about the state requirements, so. No, one final question, uh, um, uh, or it's, it's really more of a, um, observation that the shrinking enrollment, uh, does not, um, does, does, does not mean that expenses will go down as fast as, uh, FTEs. Um, uh, that we, um, you know, we had, uh, shrinking enrollment, uh, up until about, I think it was right around nineteen ninety, um, but what happens is your, um, uh, your, your staffing becomes, um, uh, more senior. And, uh, because y- you're not hiring people, uh, so the, the, the curve, uh, the, um, people start to, uh, end up in the higher end of the, um, step and track and so forth. So that's something to be aware of going forward if, if enrollment continues to go down. Um, and, and did you look at the percentage, uh, uh, of residents going to private school, which was mentioned, uh, as a factor, uh, by the, in the school?
So FinCom has not, and I, I'll look at Miu Lin, who did the education budget. I don't think we ourselves have looked at the private school enrollment. I know that, um, the superintendent and the school said they reached out to parents, but we, we didn't hear back on those numbers, um, maybe because they weren't getting the response. That, that would be an excellent question for the schools. Um, another point I'll add about enrollment and headcount is that when, um, the Finance Committee voted the school budget, we did have questions, um, and, and we estimated, some of us estimated there's about twenty percent of play there. Um, so I, I, I think the suggestion was, let's wait a year and see, and maybe then it could be more right-sized, and serious discussions can take place about what that right sizing looks like. Because as long as I've been on FinCom, I've heard about the, the forty Vs and, and how that's gonna increase the, the school enrollment, and it, it absolutely might. Um, but I, I don't think we can take it as a given, because as long as I've been on FinCom, it hasn't happened. Um, so we know it's coming, um, but maybe it should be tempered, and just one of the many factors. Okay, thank you, Roger, oh, oh, John, yes. Sure, so, um, Finance Committee member John Miller has pointed out, um, the, the number of sections, um, and how that's changed over the years, so we, I'm pulling up some of my notes. Yeah, so what, um, we, we don't know the numbers for each of the schools. We have different projections, um, that the Finance Committee did. Um, I'll pull it up here, so I know last year it was supposed to be, correct me if I'm wrong, a hundred thirteen was the ask, and we funded a hundred eleven, and they ended up coming in at a hundred ten. And I think next year, Dr. Hackett will, um, propose a number of sections of a hundred seven. And, yeah.
Well, I, I thank you, uh, and, and, um, uh, I, I hope you do describe this as, uh, uh, a spending issue, uh, an expense issue, um, you know, we're, we're a rich town with plenty of revenue, but we spend too much.
Thank you, Roger. Bill?
Hi, Megan, hello, Finance Committee, and, uh, thanks, lot of work here, so thank you first of all. Um, and, uh, you know, I understand the limitations of our revenue sources, Proposition Two and a Half and whatnot, but maybe to, uh, to Roger's point, you know, these expenses just feel like a perpetual emotion machine. We're not gonna catch this, it doesn't feel like it, and, you know, knowing there's, uh, inflation out there, some uncertainty on the schools and whatnot. Um, you know, I would thought maybe there would have been a trade-off with the schools of, hey, if we're gonna wait a year for, you know, uh, you know, reassessing full-time equivalence, maybe we don't give you the new FTEs this year, and then we'll settle up next year, so that's just one comment. But more importantly, and I know you've described budgets as lean, and I don't deny it, but do folks, or do you have a feel as to like what austerity would look like? Like how bad, I, I appreciated that one slide on if twenty twenty didn't go through, but do we run that scenario, and do we push back on these department heads and say, give it to me, and what does it look like if it's down five or ten percent? Thank you, I'm mute.
Thanks for that question, Bill, um, and I, I'll speak from my own experience. I, I've, I've seen Finance Committee recommend cuts and leaner budgets, and it's, it's not always welcome, it's, it's pushed back. So, um, I, I think it's challenging, I think we're trying to focus on what's the minimum you need, but I don't think we've asked, what does austerity look like? And if we had to cut your budget by five percent, what's the first thing to go? Um, I think we will start having those conversations in preparation for the next operating override, just to understand what, what's that next slide gonna look like? You know, if it doesn't pass, what are we positioned to lose? Any other comments? Okay. Sam?
Thanks, uh, we did do, just for Bill's question, we did do a little bit of that with the last override, Bill, where we looked at if the override failed, what would the implications be so that we could help Town Meeting and others in town understand the trade-offs for that vote? Um, but yeah, it's always, it's always a challenging question. Um, Megan, my question was more around your projections for the three years and where it leaves us from an operating reserve perspective. And one of your comments that struck me was the fact, actually, if you can go back one more, your, there you go, um, your assumptions around the three-year plan that future free cash spending at Fall and Spring Town meetings would be limited to one point one million annually, but you acknowledge that historically we run more like four, which is my memory as well. Um, so I'm just curious if you can now go back to that projection slide. To me, that, the implications are that that downward slope is gonna hit us a lot faster unless we really put the brakes on spending far more significantly than we have in the past. So I'm just curious what made Finance Committee comfortable leaving such a con, such a low number in for a Fall and Spring Town meeting?
So comfortable, so I, I thought you were gonna say, what, what made you so comfortable assuming that everything would pass, and I would say history. You know, Town Meeting is very generous, they like shiny new things.
I agree.
We, we all do, um, but it, this is the, the financial outlook, um, and you have to be practical and, and learn from history. So our assumption is that maybe after multiple years of a bu- way above average spending, that the austerity that Bill mentioned could be practiced by the Town Meeting members during, um, spring and fall Town Meeting.
So it's risky?
Even sooner, maybe even sooner, yes.
That's risky, okay, thanks.
And just to follow up on Sam's question, I mean, may, maybe one thing we could change with this projection as well, what if they spent two million dollars, what if they spent three million dollars, how much more quickly will it decline? Michelle?
Hi, um, I think I wanna go back to Bill's question, and maybe it's austerity, and I understand, Megan, that you're keeping, um, FTE solid at schools, but I think, well, and, and a hundred and seven sections is three fewer than this year, which is four fewer than last year. So enrollment is down, and it's been down seven straight years at the lower grades, and I've done slides on that, but I guess the concern I have, if we don't start to see those reductions in headcounts, which are not, you know, we're not laying off teachers for no good cause, we might have classes of a dozen kids to keep a teacher employed, when we really could have one teacher in a class of twenty-three. Uh, my concern is when we go for an override in twenty twenty-four, I'm looking at your slide, that the story is, look at all those teachers who will lose their jobs, when in fact you could argue that three teachers could lose their job this year, not because they're not performing well, not because we don't like our schools, but because we don't need three sections of elementary. So I guess it's just a comment that if we started austerity sooner, and we're actually a bit more right-sized, or to Roger's point, not adding FTE, it would be both reasonable, justifiable, you know, you could, you could make the argument. If we continue on this trend, I'm concerned that the narrative two years from now is, look how many jobs we will lose as a town, when in fact we could argue we could have lost them in fiscal twenty-three. Your budget is done, I've been in your position, the book is done, you all have voted, and I appreciate the work of everybody in that room. I just don't want Town Meeting and others to lose the, the perspective that we could be cutting now, and the cuts need not be as deep if we were being a bit more consistent. Understanding that enrollment is always a bit of a variable, uh, number, so I guess that's what I wanted to make. Let's not forget that we could have done it now, we could do it next year, but if we don't start doing it, we create what looks like an even deeper, like a, a steeper cliff that we're falling off of, when in fact, we don't need to keep building the hillside as much as we do. Not a question, just a comment, thanks.
Yeah, yeah, no, thanks, Michelle, I, I think cutting FTE is a difficult discussion to have, and that doesn't mean we shouldn't have it. Um, or, I mean, maybe a trade-off, you know? One thing that the Education Working Group had discussed is, well, you know, if, if you schools really would like to keep your FTE this high, then please reduce the overall bill, could you move things around and cut something else? You, you have funding that you can choose to use to cover some expenses this year, this year only, and the next year, let's reassess and see. Um, I, I don't think we've gotten an answer from the schools yet about what their plans to spend that on, so maybe that could be brought up at, at Town Meeting. Um, I, I turn it over to Miu Lin Chong, our vice chair.
Hi, everyone, Miu Lin Chong, um, just want to remind people on the FTEs that except for the high school piece, for the Mandarin, everything else is special education, and there was a lot of pushback when we asked, well, why are these FTEs? About the fact that there are all these additional needs for the special ed side. And that was a very difficult, multi-conversation, multi, uh, meeting conversation. So, so just want to let everyone know, we did have that discussion about the FTE, and most of that is five point six of the six FTE with special education rating.
Thank you for that.
Thanks, Miu Lin. Okay, um, next in the queue, Mariano.
Uh, thanks, Megan, and, uh, thank you, everybody, um, I think, you know, we all know how much work, uh, FinCom is around this time of year. Um, I have a question on, uh, on this slide. Um, I thought our reserves were around fourteen percent right now, not twelve point four-six percent, which is what this is starting at?
Read the book, so we have our budget book, and the numbers are fresh in my mind at twelve point four-six percent.
Okay, so that's, um, all right, at Fall Town Meeting, I thought it was like fourteen percent, which was what was, um?
It was certified, it was certified, and then I think one point seven million was spent, and there's been other things chipping away, um, so it.
Oh, so is this twelve point four-six the, what's projected to be as of June thirtieth of this year, then?
Yes, yes, so that's a better, so, right, 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 so that's the conclusion. So it, it's not starting, it's not the, um, certified number that I'm presenting, it's the as-of-right-now number. It's the as of right now number.
Okay. So the only thing that I would say is that in the past, we've had issues with. I think the 12.46 number could have its own error bars or its confidence bars. Because, for example, last year, we, it was shown that we would go down from 12.2% down to 10.5% at this exact same time. And then we went up to 14%, right? So I don't think that the FY '22, that 12.46% is set in stone. So that would be my only comment, just on the reserves projection, the error bars for 12.46%.
Fair enough. Thank you, Mariano. And I think we wanted to have some certainty, like as of right now, it's this and this is the future, you know, the past, the future. But you're right, turnbacks can happen. And I think Controller Ward wrote a nice report, I think to the select board, saying that the past two years of turnbacks were unusually high. And she, I think she said she did not expect or she didn't project that same level. In fact, and my collective memory will help me, we pushed to estimate turnbacks being 1% of the total budget, while I think she really likes a more conservative 1 million number. More like 800,000. So, yeah, so for us, going to 1% was being aggressive. But, you know, you're right, it could be even higher.
Yeah, my comment is, I look back down to 2015 to every budget book. And every budget book projected a decrease in the next year. And we actually had an increase every year except for 2019. So that's why I'm commenting on that 12.46% number should probably have some error bars. Because when I presented, when I was Chair of FinCom and I presented in 2016, I presented a decrease down to 8. something percent. And it was actually an increase up to 11. something percent. So and it's been that way every year.
So you raise another good point that that FinCom has discussed. Part of the motivation for doing the operating reserves projection this way is that we don't want to overstate the need to town meeting. We don't want to say the sky's falling, you must do something now. We want, this is really just looking back at 10 years of data. We feel like it's more accurate. The data itself is telling the story. So that was one motivation. But, you know, I'll come back and say, yes, the 12.46% could have error bars. And that would not be as pretty a graph, but fair point. Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Pam?
Hi, I want to echo the sentiments that people said in thanking you because FinCom is a buttload of work and often thankless. So I appreciate everybody who is putting the time and effort in. So thank you for that. I have a question about, and it's my lack of an understanding of the AAA bond rating. And I was hoping, and I don't know if you can answer the question now, perhaps later at town meeting or privately, if I could find out a little bit more about the bond rating. At what point do we have to worry about when we risk losing the AAA bond rating? Where do we, as as town meeting members, have to start getting very concerned about that? And what does it mean? My understanding also is that it's very hard, if you lose it, to get it back again. What does that mean for actual interest rates in terms of the difference? And how that could impact our our debt ceiling? Does it impact our debt ceiling? And would it impact significantly? Would it impact the tax bills that we have on debt exclusion or operational overrides?
Thanks for that question, Pam. I know we've had questions, we've had discussions on FinCom about that, about what factors go into the Moody's bond rating. And I think that's a good suggestion to put a slide together for town meeting. So I'll speak quickly to what I know and what I recall. They published a summary stating their reasons for maintaining our AAA rating. Part of that is, you know, good financial planning, setting up dedicated funds for our debt payments and obligations. Also, not spending beyond our means and maintaining that 6 to 10% reserves. Also, I think the Sustainability Director was mentioned as a positive factor. And I know I'm looking around at FinCom members, we read that document. Are there any other aspects? And Rich, please jump in because I know you mentioned it last night. But one question I have is, how often is it reassessed? Is it every two years or more frequently? Does anyone remember? Every year? Okay. And then Pam's follow up question was, well, what would the impact be if we degraded our rating? And would it be as easy to recover the next year? I don't know, but we can look into that. Does anyone here know? Oh, John, John has his hand up. Okay, no, to John? But I heard the question is, can you estimate? Like, is it? Okay, put that in. Okay. Arun Balasubramanian, well, tell us more.
Usually on the. Muni said, it's kind of credit analysis.
So they can see you.
So we do some kind of a structural analysis. And usually, if you lose a rating, it's, it takes a little bit of time to get it back. Because they have a lot of other towns to evaluate and there is a cycle. And then usually there's some structural reasons that you have to fix and prove to them that you've done it. So usually it takes maybe two, couple of years for you to get it back. Also, the higher the interest rates, the premium you pay if you have poorer credit usually is also a little higher than when the rates. So you can think of it as a percentage of the current rate. And so that that spread usually is higher. Usually, it's not a perfect sense.
Thank you. And forgive my ignorance, these these interest rates, do they change the payment structure for existing debt exclusion loans?
Are they retroactive? No, they would just be for future debt.
So for future debt? And then would we on that future debt then be at that higher interest rate for any future debt we acquire at a lower bond rating?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Maureen.
Hi, thank you, Megan, for all of your work and to all of the members of Finance Committee. One area where I have maybe some insight, but not the knowledge that would come from Finance Committee is new growth. And especially, I just recently did go take a peek at the two new 40B projects that are now under construction. I would think all of us should be asking what the revenue will be when they're completed. I assume these are, I mean, here's my ignorance. These are new buildings and there will be taxes and revenue coming in. And I would guess with the distribution of bedrooms that, and looking at comparables, maybe in places where these large scale buildings exist, places like Newton and Wellesley that would be have similar school systems. I would assume that there could be some analysis of new growth, money coming in and number of children and how that will play out. So has Finance Committee started probing the analysis of these two projects, especially now that they are under construction?
So I think that would have happened in the education context, if any. So I look to the former chairs for their collective memory on whether or not this has been done.
If I recall, they had.
Over to Nicole.
So Maureen, in terms of, you know, like River Street, I believe that's the name of it. It's literally around the corner from my house. And that one's been talked about for a while. There might have been some estimates, but it certainly is not going to be ready for the fall. I don't, I don't think, based on what I've seen. And it's not included in the calculations for enrollment. You know, which is why we're forecasting, you know, the schools and we are using their numbers, are forecasting enrollment to go down for for next year. So beyond that, I, you know, we haven't had conversations about what fall of 2023 is going to look like with those new builds. And as far as new growth, I mean, again, we've already increased the new growth number in the revenue projections. And for reasons other than actual buildings, we can't increase it higher. I don't know when River Street is actually going to come online and start paying taxes. So we have to keep the 850 number as it is now. But when we look at those numbers in the year coming up, so we're, right now, we're looking at FY '23. When we look at FY '24, when maybe some of these new buildings are going to come online, you know, Controller and our town assessor, they know, they know about these projects. And I think these error bands, they take into account, you know, these things. So higher, higher revenue, that's on, you know, the rosier side of the picture. When we can say, okay, well, what if new growth comes in strong year after year after year? That's how you get some of these higher error bands. So that's, I know that's vague, but, you know, that's when we look at historicals, what we can say.
So those are historicals. And I would say now we have real buildings and we can certainly gauge what the revenues will be. It sounds to me as if it's probably going to be a little bit of a positive bump for new growth. And then as the units are rented, then we're going to start seeing children coming in. It's going to be an interesting bounce because these are, I mean, talking about a couple hundred units total. That's quite a lot. So it just seems to me it's not premature as we're doing all this other production and to start trying to get, plug real numbers into those, the two areas, the tax revenue coming in and the cost going out.
Yeah, Miu Lin is going to come say more, the vice chair. But I'll just say, I mean, in terms of the error bands, it takes in so much stuff. I mean, there's so much that goes into our $142 million budget that, you know, if new growth comes in at 1.5 million instead of 850, that's, that's, that's great. But there are also other things that that come in here. But we are trying to show a rosy picture and a less happy picture with these error bands of how it could go. But Miu Lin, you say more.
Hi, just want to add more. I just want to add some of the projections, as well as a comment coming in terms of the education side. At the height of the numbers, we had 4617 for FY '20. We had more than 300 students than we have projected for FY '23. And even the schools' projections going out to FY '27, currently, the projection is no more than about, that's 4161. So it's the school's projection as of now is keeping at 4,200. But even if it did go up and the 40Bs came in, at the height, that's more than 300 students that we were somehow able to have in our system, given the same number of FTEs. And now we're increasing the FTEs. So I just want to let everyone know that's that kind of perspective. So that I'm not worried because that has a lot of students, 300, that's not currently in the in the system right now.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Oh, Carol.
Hi, I thought Maureen's question was an excellent one. And I'm not 100% sure I just understood the answer. Was was she saying that the we have had 300 students more? And therefore, there's room within these FTEs to handle more students? Was that the answer to that question?
Exactly. That was a great restatement of it, Carol. So in 2020, there were 300 more students, more than 300 students in the system. And we know how they were distributed. So, I mean, if they were all at one grade level, that would be more challenging.
So, and that was 2020, so we're not talking, that was last year. You're saying last year. So we're not talking 2020 more than that. Okay, okay. All right. So the mix of staff and their needs hasn't, shouldn't have changed dramatically since then. Okay, so I do understand that point. I do think the point, though, about, so your feel, so the belief is that these two projects, I mean, we are talking about two known projects that are coming online. They're not hypothetical. And they would fall, I would think, not within the 10 year average growth rate. I think this would be a bump, right? That's outside of your 10 year average. So you have two major projects like this coming online.
We can certainly look to see if that's been included. I know, I think some funds have already been received from those. But sure, we can, we can estimate if the tax revenue would go up and by how much by looking at comparable towns. Yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, you have done models that go out 100 years. So you could probably do a couple of years. Wink, wink. So, no, I do appreciate, I don't, I don't mean to be flip. I appreciate all this and I understand it's hard, it's very hard to project. Can you just explain again that sort of methodology you used on 10 year rolling average? And it says excluding the two extreme values. What is that?
Right. Sure. So you take 10 years of data. And if there's a really high number, so if your revenues were really an outlier, you would eliminate it. And that's just to try to get numbers closer to the mean. And that's a common statistical technique to estimate error.
But our revenues would have gone higher than normal because we passed an override or something like that. Is that what you're saying? So you took those out, assuming that we might.
One example, yeah.
Okay. And then on the expense side, did you also average outlier years on expenses or were they?
Yes, yes.
So that's kind of get at, okay.
And I need to do a plug. Stephen Karp is the one who implemented this, a member of the Finance Committee. So.
Okay, so were the, so, and were they done at kind of a macro level? Or the averages done at sort of a detail level on the budget?
Detail level. And so we have the roll up in our appendix for the three year plan and the.
It's so helpful to have a three year plan. I really, I really do appreciate the context that gives for all of us. So the last question I have is, and I know this is a tough one. It's very hard to predict what the contract negotiations will be in these. Is there, what is the stance of the committee in thinking that through and projecting that? Or conversations with the boards that are negotiating those contracts? Because it does always feel like those come to town meeting as a fait accompli. And I just always have wondered, and given, you know, that we are one town here trying to deal with a very tight situation, what are the kinds of conversations happening on the side of that?
Great question. So we have not dug into that to bound how bad it could be. So we have not dug into that to, to bound how bad it could be and what's our best case scenario. Early on, we talked about looking at historical impact and how much it's gone up. But then we, we were distracted by other things and, and didn't follow that thread. I don't think they'll all be negotiated for town meeting for sure. Maybe shortly thereafter. I'm, I'm impressed by the Personnel Board. They've now set deadlines. They must receive the materials by a certain time or they're not going to vote it. So that will help prevent kind of last-minute assessment and voting and hopefully give Finance Committee and Town Meeting more time to review any changes, contractual changes that we will vote.
And when we do override projections and when we did the last override, we did make some kind of assumptions, right, in the, in the growth of those personnel line items, correct?
So I don't remember what was done for the last override. It was, yeah, Nicole's not in your head, yes.
I don't know that. We, we put in higher than it, than it had been historically. But then I think that some of the contracts came in even higher than we anticipated. So we missed it.
Different administration, yeah.
We went higher, but they went higher still.
So we tried, yeah, yeah. So we tried. And so if, if that's sufficient, Carol, I, I wanted, I neglected to call upon someone in the room earlier. And it might be for an earlier point, but Yanis, did you have a question or a point? So for those of you viewing at home, Yanis's comment was something I tried to allude to, but he said it much more quantitatively and succinct, that the types of students have changed. The special needs students have gone up by 150 in what, in K to five, he said? More than, and what was the other number? He said 800? Okay, so our low, just to repeat, our low in the past 10 years has been 650 special education students, and that's grown to about 850 now. And so this is the notion that even though we have fewer students, we have different students with different needs, different requirements on how many teachers, how many aides. So that's part of the discussion as well. Thank you, Yanis. John?
I was just gonna add, another way to say what we've been was saying earlier is that there are five sections of students that could be added to K through five. These four, the class sizes gets to the minimum size recommended by the school. 18 for K through two and 22 through five. There are 16 sections of students that could be added to the K through five grades before the class sizes get to the upper recommended number, which is 20 for K through two and 22 through five. So what we mean is saying is there is room for quite a large number of students to come into the system without changing the structure of K through five one bit.
So I'm sure you didn't hear that at home, but John Miller commented on some of the analysis that the Education Working Group has done on taking the school committee recommended minimum, maximum class size and distributing the students that were there last year and the predicted number of increases for this year. So, and your bottom line was that there, there's room for how many more students in K through five? Okay. Yeah, it's a bottom line, not, not every classroom is maxed out. So that, that's another facet of this, trying to see. It's, it's not always popular, but could students be moved around to different schools? I mean, could that help lynch? Could that help crowding if it exists? So that's just another part of the discussion, how to right-size the FTE and the classes and the number of sections. But thank you, Carol. Do you have another question?
Well, I just want to follow up on that. I, I always find those, I, I, having looked at these data for years, I, it's, it's very hard. And that in, you know, looking at it on pen, pen with, on paper, that the math can be worked out that, yes, you have X number of students and Y number of teachers and you should be able to teach them all. But it not doesn't, doesn't always work that well. It might involve redistricting or it might, like you said, involve a different composition of students with different kinds of needs. So I'm, I'm still a little fuzzy on if, what that, what that math that I sort of heard halfway implies and how the school committee would respond to those statements. I, I, I think is a critically important conversation for us to have, but I think that we should be, you know, understand that those of us who care about the finances and those of us who care about the education are coming at the, this analysis from different lenses. And both are important, but I just think, oh, okay, that's helpful.
This is, this is what I had in mind, and it's not in the budget book, but it was in the Working Groups and Milin's education write-up. So it's no longer draft. She's presented this. But, so this is what John and Milin were referring to earlier. So if you look at the very bottom, the school committee has a minimum target class size for grades K to two of 18, a maximum target class size of 20, and a tolerable, I'll call it, 10% over that max target class size of 22. And for grades through five, it grows minimum 20, max 22, 10% over 24.2. So using these numbers based on the projected number of students in each grade and the projected section number, we've mapped out and rounded up. Okay, how many sections would we have at the minimum, mid, and above that max target? And so this is how it maps out. If it's minimum, we'd have 101 sections. If it's a little larger, we'd have 91 and even larger, 83. And so Milin or John, would you like to add anything to this? Okay.
Yeah, and, and again, it is.
Wait, 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 Carol, wait, wait, wait. Can you come, 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 come?
That's one comment. We, we do look at, and this year we weren't provided by schools, but schools. And last year, we saw there were classrooms that had 15 kids per classroom. But if you look at the average across the elementary here in the red, you see 18, 18, 17, 18, 18, right? It's not even, it, it's all under 20, which is kind of the middle range here. So it's, there's room there. I know there's balance. I understand between the different schools and stuff like that. And it is the school committee and the superintendent to decide whether students are allowed to shift between schools to balance it all out. But there is room here, not just by numbers. I certainly have heard parents say that they, I personally know one person who's very upset, who wanted to move. I can tell you that. And couldn't move this year. But there is room here, not just in the numbers, but in the students who might want to move, and it's not happening.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry to cut you off, Carol, but I know she, she wanted to make a point. Okay. Thanks, Carol. Sam?
So I, I think this is great analysis. I'm curious if, as you looked at it, if you mapped the various target-sized classrooms to the actual space in the schools. I think that's one of the challenges we've had in the past is we might all say, hey, 23 or 25 students is perfectly reasonable, but the classroom may not actually be able to accommodate that many. Was there anything done to look at the footprint that we have to exist in?
No.
Okay.
Sam?
I don't think there's any classrooms that are at 10% over.
So, yeah, because none of the classes are at that 10% limit, it's not that to be a concern. But, but what I think I'm hearing is maybe at the different schools, they would have more students. So maybe they would be closer if it's not distributed evenly. So. Yeah, okay. And, and the response is we're still far away from that. It hasn't seemed to be a concern.
Thanks.
Sure. Great discussion. Any more here or at home? Well, if not, I'll stop sharing my screen. And a big thank you to all of the Finance Committee members for their hard work. Thank you for attending. Feel free to reach out to any of us afterwards with comments or questions. And I would love your feedback. Something Milin and I were just discussing today is how could we make the budget book better? Could we make it simpler so it's more readable? So we would love your feedback there. Courtney, not necessarily certainly now, you know, it's. Oh, sorry, Courtney, you're on mute.
There were a few of us who had understood, usually there's an opening for brief public comment at the start usually of the meetings, but it sounds like you're, are you signing off and not having that this time?
Oh, no, no, you guys have patiently waited. And I spoke with, with someone earlier today about that. And sure, we do have public comment. Typically at our FinCom meetings, it's at the beginning, but because this was a hearing, we just jumped right into that. But please, I, I turn all over the floor if you'd want to make a comment for your group.
Oh, great. I think there, there are a couple of us who would, is there somebody who would like to, maybe Betsy? Would you like to speak first? Thank you so much for being willing.
Sure, yeah. Bill here. Betsy and I have lived across the street for 25 years from the Rec Department. And I guess I had some questions about the free cash and how resources are allocated for things like the sports court or the lighted pick-a-all court. And a lot of the neighbors have questions about that and just want to know how that process works.
Okay, so the sports court is Article 18, and it's sponsored by the Select Board. And I believe the proposal is to use free cash for $200,000. I can confirm that, but I probably will see people nod. Yep. So that's a proposal. That, that's, for that specifically, there, there can be other methods of funding. It just really depends on who's proposing and, and what the objectives are.
Okay, and I guess to follow up on that, so it sounds like the finances are pretty tight. So how does that money get approved? Is it voted on or is it just, it sounded like you have a certain percentage of money that you put to free cash?
Sure, sure. So free cash is used. It could be used to plug an operational hole as, that's what I discussed for the FY20 we budget. But in the case of spring and fall town meeting, warrant articles are presented for certain items and the suggested funding would be that free cash or the town savings. And so that would be used for this specific project if it passes. Is it two-thirds vote for this? Majority, majority. Thank you. Yeah, majority of town meeting would have to vote. Okay. Thanks, Betsy. So I spoke with Angela earlier today. So Angela, would she like to make a comment?
Yes, thank you so much for all of the effort that you've put into the budget. And I know that FinCom works really hard and there are lots of numbers and lots of people that you're trying to satisfy. So we appreciate your efforts. I think a lot of people in our neighborhood are concerned because it seems as though the Rec Department approached the Select Board directly on the Mystic Sport Court rather than submitting it as a capital project. So it hasn't been compared to other needs and other asks through the town. It's also allowed there to be very little communication and no outreach from the Rec Department until ironically today, there was a push email from the Rec Department with some basic information to the whole, to whoever's on their list, I'm guessing. It also means that they haven't followed protocol for some things like traffic studies that generally get done at school properties. So the Mystic School is no longer a school, but it is a school-owned property. And it's a little bit confusing to us because we're hearing things that are presented to the Select Board after the fact where it talks about having 300 additional kids playing street hockey. But then we're also being told that there aren't any lights and there aren't any additional usage times. So it's a little bit confusing. So there are some questions that we haven't had answered as a neighborhood. And we think part of that is due to the way the money was asked for because it went through free cash rather than a project that had to be compared against other things. Another concern that we have is that there's no maintenance plan or funding that we've heard about. And this is a site that already needs maintenance. And so if we're doing a $200,000 ask, how long does that look good? And then when it starts to degrade, who's paying for that and how are the funds going to be allocated for that? So we just want to bring some of these matters to FinCom's attention because it feels like it might be one of those fast funding things that maybe it looks glitzy and it looks great upfront, but we're not sure how it's going to withstand the test of time. So thank you very much for your time today.
Sure, Angela, I, I don't think we, we have to respond because it's public comment. If it would be helpful, so I, I believe, and I'm looking at a former Capital Planning Committee member, I believe the sports court had been submitted as a capital article. And then was it ranked or voted previously or can, can you come up and remind us? I'm, I'm again calling a room, Balasubramanian, to the stand.
For the last three years, whenever we've had sport, uh, sports courts, unfortunately, they fall off in the ranking. And that's the truth. Most of the time, there's always something that's deemed more important. As we try to allocate, they usually fall off the ranking, but specifically talking to the most recent time that, that we had talked about the synthetic courts. What had happened was it was put in and in, at the fields. And we, we had kind of questioned, kind of like, one of the things that they brought up is every 10 years we'll have to renew this. So at Capital, they'd said, well, we have two synthetic courts now and, and at $650,000 a year. And if, at a 10-year cycle, that's roughly around, you know, $130,000 a year we'll have to set aside if we want to keep replenishing them on a cycle. How are we going to fund this? So we had a whole bunch of questions in the Capital CPC that we had asked the Rec Department. And as a result, they kind of pulled the request out of the capital ranking, you know, because they thought maybe it'll, it won't get ranked as a priority. And, and, and then it was sub, I'm guessing it's being submitted as a separate article or they were looking at other funding evidence for, for that particular, for that particular field.
Okay. Thanks, Angela. Darren, your hand is raised.
Hi, yeah, I have some slides if that's okay. Just a couple. It won't be long, I promise.
Well, because this was focused on the budget hearing, I. Because this was focused on the budget hearing, I, I don't feel I have to indulge you. I'm sorry. And because the hour is late, if you have any comments that have not already been addressed by Angela or Betsy, I welcome you to make those. But if it is similar, I ask you to be respectful of our time.
Sure. Yeah, I'll just summarize. Angela did cover some of my points. And first, I'd like to thank everyone for their ongoing efforts to improve Winchester. I think that's, you know, we're all on the same page here and that's our overriding concern. I guess I was concerned, I live on Madison Avenue, 13 Madison Avenue, which is a couple houses up from the rec center. And my concern was the way the project was approached and the $100,000 net revenue estimate that was made when they pitched the case to the select board. And there was a Zoom presentation on March, in March to the select board, which made the case for this. And basically it boils down to $34,000 revenue from actual court use by new programs. So 59% of that use would be from street hockey, which would be a new program. And there would be 120 registrants expected. And then there's 17, 12, and 12% from other things like kick a ball on sports pitch and stuff, renting out for birthday parties. So that's only 34,000 from the actual court use. But the, but the rest of the revenue was supposed to come from assuming that an additional student would enroll in each after-school program. So that would account for 62,000 revenue that they quoted as part of the 100,000. So it's not clear to me what the connection is between, you know, a new sports court and an additional student enrolling in every class. I don't think that's established in any way. So that's two thirds of the revenue that they've, you know, pitched. So I really think the revenue is about 34,000. And if you look at what that, what that implies in terms of court usage, it amounts to about five and a half hours a day of court use if it's six days a week. And I understand actually it's going to be five days a week. So it's going to be more than five and a half hours per day of court usage. This is my estimate. This is not their estimate. Okay. And this is strictly amateur, based on limited information. But you know, if you, if you account for 120 registrants playing hockey on the court, you have 12 teams, you have 10 street hockey players in a game and so on. You can add these numbers up and you find out that it's going to take about five and a half hours a day. So that would mean that you have about 47 people coming and going each day or almost 300 people. So I think that's, that would motivate a more professional traffic and neighborhood impact assessment, in my opinion. Already Madison Avenue is kind of reduced to one lane a lot of the time by the existing use of the rec center. And you know, we're, we're fine with that. You know, our kids go to the rec center and, you know, it's a community. But if you add 50 more people a day coming and going, I think that could be an impact. And one idea is they have a very nice mystic gym, which they could maybe use as a pilot program for, you know, to see what the level of interest in street hockey is. People could come sign up for that and see, and they could gauge, do sort of a market study. It's a very nice gym, actually. And overall, I think we need a holistic approach to the mystic site because building maintenance is a bit lacking and there are parts of the building that are disrepair. And, you know, we need to think in a, in a big picture way about what the site really needs. So.
So if you wouldn't mind wrapping up, because I think public comment is limited in time, but thank you for your, for your comments. Courtney? You still on mute?
Okay, extraordinary amount of work in your financial committee overview. I, I just, it's a huge act of public service to be involved in this way. So thank you so much to the whole group for the work you do. Really, it's appreciated. I, I live right next door to the rec department and have for 19 years. And I just think it's, there's, there's things that have evolved, right? So it's good the building is used, but after-school programming is a lot of what goes there. But now that there are after-school programs in the elementary buildings, which is great because kids don't have to get on a bus and they can walk home afterward maybe, right? And all kids who need those services can get served. There may be a shift in the population who's coming all the way over to Mystic for after-school. And they're just, I just think the financial committee could help push the town. And I don't know how all of this works, right? But to really dial way out and look at really there's this resource. What's the best way to leverage this resource to benefit the town in terms of services? And also to do as well as it can in terms of financials. Historically, I know that the kind of lease that was given, one of the after-school programs, which is a, not directly affiliated with town, was just, just really dramatically undermarket. And they're, they're just, I just think it might be time to really take that bird's eye view and make a long-term plan for how to best capture, you know, things in front, that come from that site to benefit the town. To me, this, this project seems, you know, I don't know what the analogy is, but it's, it's, I don't know. It's, it's, is it like putting a porch on when the roof is leaking? And there's, you know, it's, it's, it's not, it's, it's kind of the cart leading the horse or whatever it is. But I, it just doesn't, and I think many of us just learned about it for the first time on Sunday. And I, so I look at this through the lens of educational programming, quality town, obviously neighborhood impact, but really fiscal responsibility of using this property. So I just don't know if there are ways that FinCom can push for a holistic view and putting a hold on this vote. Because it, it doesn't, it sounds like they circumvented some of the prioritization process. And it, it, it just doesn't sound to me like a logical plan.
We, we don't have power to disrupt votes, but we will, as a committee, vote in favor or against. So thank you for your comment. Young?
Hi, Finance Committee. Thank you for serving the community and for your time today. I just wanted to echo the sentiments shared, shared by our neighbors because we feel that this project is rushed and we feel that we were somewhat intentionally excluded from being involved. And according to the newsletter that was sent out today, it seems that the, even before the funding was allocated, they have already decided to go with Huntress Sports as the company for the project. And I would just want to ask what the correct process is for procuring such a contract? Because we've done some home improvement, you know, projects ourselves. And usually you get a number of competing bids and then to make sure that you're the best to offer. And so I was just wondering what the correct process is for that? And whether this is, whether enough, whether we know that we're getting the best deal out there.
Thank you, Young. When we hear from the select board about this article, we will ask those questions. We don't know at this time.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Steven?
I'm Stephen Carney, reside at Ten Marshall, right next door, is in a bar. Want to thank you for your time. This has been a very educational experience. I want to voice my, my family's concerns as well as many of the neighbors that it could be a misuse of tax dollars. And like other people have said, we had no idea about this plan. It seems awfully rushed through. And I think it would be good to be able to get after information out to everyone instead of just GM through.
If there are no other comments or questions, I will close the session of the Finance Committee FY23 Budget Hearing. Thank you all for your participation and comments and questions. Recording stopped.